July 22, 2024, regular city council meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk Deaton, let the roll call show everyone is present. And we'll move on to approval of the minutes for the meeting on July 8. Councilmember Bogart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. No bills this evening. Move on to approval of the agenda for this evening. Councilmember Bogart.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda under new business to discuss a resolution to recognize South Lyon Live as a nonprofit organization that operates in the city of South Lyon for the purpose of applying for a raffle license with the state of Michigan.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll add that as new business number four. Nothing on the consent agenda for this evening, so we'll move on to public comment. We open the floor for the public to address the body here. Two minutes, state your name and address for the clerk if you would. Seeing none, we'll close public comment.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Just on a point, we approved the addition of the agenda, did we actually approve the agenda then?
Oh, you're right, that's a good point. We'll move back to approve the agenda as amended, thank you. So I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Councilmember Dilg. Moving on to a discussion of downtown with DDA Director Nate Mack, and filling in for the DDA Director will be City Manager Paul Zelnick this evening.
Few items Nate wanted me to brief council on. The farmer's market was sold out again for the week, and things continue to go well for the market despite a few last-minute cancellations. He's working with the vendors to try to stop getting the cancellations and try to secure, to make sure we have enough people for the farmer's market. He also wanted to update that we did secure another sponsor for the farmer's market, which is Lyon Counseling Center. The DDA's newly adopted strategic plan and transformation strategy is attached to this report, and the document provides a foundation for the DDA's activities for the next three to five years. The DDA at their last meeting approved a facade loan application for 222 and 228 South Lafayette. It's the building that has the, going to put in the new tiki bar, the Curvins Creamery and Village Bakery. The plan is to remove the existing stucco to determine extent of the facade restoration that will need to take place. Nate met with the Main Street Oakland County this past week for their monthly check-in meeting. They discussed where they are with the strategic plan, is how the county will assist with the reimbursement for the activity. They will be putting $2,000 towards to help offset those costs. And that's all I have, and be happy to try to answer any questions that you may have regarding the downtown, and if not, I can't answer them, I'll direct them to the DDA Director.
Councilmember Moser.
I don't know if you can help with this, but the market manager has said she's asked for the last four weeks to get the trash emptied up there, and we drove by earlier today, there is garbage everywhere. I don't know if we need to put a call into priority to get that cleaned up.
I'll check that out.
Yeah, it's, we drove by earlier, I don't think it was picked up between, what was it, like 3:00? 3:00 o'clock I drove by there, and it was just, it's a mess, and it stinks, and it just, it needs to be picked up weekly. So I don't know what we have to do with priority to get them on that. And then the other thing, I had asked last, two weeks ago, to have the farmer's market website updated with the sponsorship form, with the 2024 sponsorship form on there with the correct dates.
Okay.
It hasn't been done, so I'd like to see if we can get that done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion regarding downtown? Thank you very much. Moving on to the fire chief report, and tonight we have Captain Cindy Conrad.
Good evening, councilmembers, mayor. We are at 637 incidents for the year, as of today. We scheduled our interviews for our own fire inspector and sergeant for Tuesday, August 6th. Engine 7-1 has finally returned and in service, and we hired a new cadet today, Michael Ulrich. Interestingly enough, her dad, his dad used to work for us quite a few years back, so it's kind of, it's going to be interesting. Thank you, that's it.
Oh, wait a minute, we ought to find out if there's any questions.
Nice try, Cindy.
I hope I have the answers for you, if you have any.
Now I feel like I need one.
Do we have any questions for Captain Conrad? Okay, now you get off easy. Moving on to the police chief report with Lieutenant Seidelin this evening.
Last week, we participated in the touch-a-truck on the 17th at Lowe's in Lyon Township. Chief Bocky was there, he said it was a very large turnout, but it was cut short due to rain. We also had the Pride event, which took place on the 14th. I guess it was a great turnout and no issues reported. We are starting to conduct interviews for the admin assistant position on the 25th, on Thursday this week. We should have the position filled very shortly, probably by the end of the month, I think we have eight applicants. Our drone came in, we're now getting set up for the training for two operators, and the in-car computers we received last week, but we're waiting for the computer mounts to get them installed in our patrol cars. That's all I have.
Any questions, Lieutenant Seidelin? Councilmember Bogart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regarding the drone, do you think that'll be operational by Pumpkin Fest?
I'm not sure. I know the training is pretty extensive, they have to go through FAA training, as well as some other training, so maybe, maybe not, but we can't fly it obviously until we get these guys trained.
Sure. And finally, I just want to acknowledge the department for maintaining the police presence at Pride. It was a nice event.
Absolutely, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to unfinished business number one, second reading of the ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of South Lyon.
Good evening. At the May 13th council meeting, the city council reviewed revised conditional rezoning requests for the project that included modified design of the entrance drive and approved the first reading of the rezoning ordinance and the preliminary site plan. On the agenda tonight is the second reading. Following the May 13th meeting, the applicant approached the city with an updated preliminary site plan with the change to the pedestrian pathway in the development. On the updated plan, a pedestrian pathway runs along the wetlands on the east side of the property and along Elk Lake Court out to Dixboro Road. Pedestrian circulation is still maintained throughout the development, but this proposed path provides a more clearly designated pedestrian pathway and maintains the 25-foot welton setback by proposing a walkway outside of the setback area. In order for the pathway to be added and stay out of the setback area, some elements of the site plan have shifted slightly west, and the rezoning line has shifted slightly, but the shift does not have an impact on the development itself. These revisions require minimal changes to the legal descriptions of the rezoning areas. This includes an increase of the RM3 area by 0.06 acres and a decrease of the I-1 area by 0.06 acres. This is an overall change of 0.2% of the area and has been determined to be a de minimis change to the rezoning request. Included in your materials are a review memo from CIB on the revisions and an updated review from HRC. There are three motions that require action tonight. The first is for the second reading of the conditional rezoning ordinance. The second is for the updated preliminary site plan dated July 16, 2024. The third is to approve the conditional rezoning agreement itself and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement. I'm going to pass it off to Bob Langen to talk more about the proposed pathway and the shifts associated with it. I'm happy to answer any questions you have for me, and everyone should have a copy of some slides from the applicant that he's going to go through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council. Bob Langen, Principal of Elevate Land Holdings, 128 North Center Street, Northville, Michigan is my address. And thank you Hannah for the great introduction. I just wanted to highlight the change that we made, we took it upon ourselves to make this change, even though you had approved the conditional rezoning and the site plan. There were some comments by certain council members about the benefit to the project of moving the entrance, the pedestrian walkway, to the east side of the entrance to the subdivision, and that would reduce a road crossing there at the interchange of our entrance and Lake Street. And of course, we love that idea. And so, just to highlight and to hone in on that, it's really the major change, it's the only change that we really intended to make, and I'll go through what that change created, and it caused us to change other elements of the project, but very minor. So you should have this little four pages. The first, the first slide here shows you in a dark line what the prior pathway would have been, which is not only for our residents, but for anybody going, let's say they live anywhere in town and they want to go out west and down Dixboro Road to the Huron Valley Trail, they would cross our entrance and then go crossing two more roads, and really being on the interior of our development, which is fine, and it would be great, but we felt like members of the public who don't live there might be apprehensive to do that. And anytime you're crossing roads, you introduce the opportunity for conflict, right? Car, person, conflict. And so, we looked at it, and now if you just, there's the, second page is these blowups, but I'm going to skip over that and go to this third page. And by switching the entrance to the east side of our entrance, as you can see, you can take that pathway and you can go along the wetlands, which is a thing of value as well, that's got to be 600 or so feet of wetlands, that we're now traversing, we're not going interior within the development, and we're getting back to Dixboro without crossing any roads. So we felt like that was a really cool, and thank you for that insight, that was a really cool deal. So what that did was to get the room to do that, right here where the dog park is and where the building is, we couldn't fit the path and the dog park and the building and the road all right there. There's a little pinch point right there. So we moved everything down 30 feet, basically triggering the change to the legal description and the change to the area, but it's 30, everything's just moved down 30 feet, and that's all we changed. But we felt like that was minor, it's just kind of moving lines a little bit, it doesn't change the density, it doesn't change the phasing, it really just, really changed for the much better this pedestrian, this pedestrian circulation within the site and with, within the city going to and from the trail and going to and from downtown. So, that's really it. And everything else is, as we discussed at the last meeting, the bridge and all that is all, all there, all the same. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have, but I want to explain that change and I want to explain our motivation for it.
Councilmember Dilg.
I just wanted to say that I really appreciated it, you changing that, I think it looks a lot better, and you know, you didn't have to do it, and just out of our suggestion, so I really appreciate you doing that. I think it's going to be, the whole thing is going to be better off for it.
It's a pleasure. It made a big difference.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Councilmember Bogart.
Will there be a sidewalk that extends from the entrance to Dixboro Road, and then from Dixboro Road down to the industrial entrance?
I'm sorry, I'm not certain that I understand your question.
Sure. So, you have the revised entrance, will there be a sidewalk that extends to the corner and then down?
No. No, and that was eliminated two, if not three versions ago. When we, when we were really, as we all remember, we were really drilling down on wetland impact.
Yeah.
And as we designed the bridge crossing, and we just, we got really kind of microscopic, we reasoned that by eliminating that boardwalk across, I don't remember how many feet, but from, from the entrance heading west is all wetland impacting boardwalk.
Okay.
And so, we planned and we decided to route pedestrians to the interior of the site to avoid wetland impact.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Yeah, pleasure.
Councilmember Kibble.
That actually is going to end up being a mirror image of what's on the other side of Dixboro Road, you know, there's no walkway along that, that course either, so the idea to have people that are interior of this, to be able to get around that corner to get, heading down Dixboro, you know, you're, you've really enhanced this, the idea of trying to make something work on Dixboro Road, there's a long history of people, if you're walking on Dixboro Road, you're actually walking on Dixboro Road, so.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, for you to end up picking that up, I can see that being something that might end up being seen as not really your problem kind of thing, so.
Well, yes, I mean, I'm a runner and a biker, and anytime I can stay on a path that is not even on the side of the road, but off the road entirely, I'm doing that every time. So the idea being that you don't need to walk on Dixboro Road, you can jump, the whole development is served by interior sidewalks. This is a separate pathway that connects to Dixboro Road and then back out to Lake Street. So everybody within the site can get to this path, and anybody coming through can, doesn't need to use Dixboro Road, or Lake Street for that matter, they can go and take this interior path, to your point.
I definitely wanted to echo a lot of the other statements, I appreciate the changing of the pathway next to the bridge being on the east side instead of the west side, I think that takes away a lot of the concerns I had about folks swooping in there too quickly and possibly causing an issue. You did mention at the last meeting about EV chargers, I wasn't sure where they were on the map, or is it possible that those are being tabled until you have a better idea of where connections would be?
No, they're on the site plan, I just think they're really too small.
Small.
You'll see, if I can approach, I can probably point them out to you, if you mind.
If you don't mind.
Sure.
So, it would be, let's go to the bigger. Sorry?
Sorry, Lisa.
Sorry?
I was trying to find them, I kept looking and finding handicap spots.
Well, they are here, I promise you. Where are they, is the question?
And they've got like just a little number and then that's it?
Flight rack? There's like six of them here, I just don't see them. I'll ask the engineers. Why am I missing them? Does that say?
That says charging.
Car charging badge, they're there, there's two there.
There's two there.
Okay.
I thought there were somewhere on the clubhouse. What does that say? That's the mailbox. About there, there you go.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Yep. It's small.
Yeah, it's, and then with the shading too.
Yeah.
Okay.
If there's four, if not six, actual dual pedestal stations.
I appreciate it, I kept, I kept seeing, I kept looking and finding the handicap spots and missing them, so, thank you so much for that clarification.
Yeah, it's a pleasure, sure.
Councilmember Kurtschwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the second reading of the ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of South Lyon by conditionally rezoning portions of the total 34.7 plus or minus acre parcel on the east side of Dixboro Road, south of 10 Mile Lake Street, parcel number 21-30-126-003, zoned I-1 light industrial as follows. 24.46 plus or minus acres of RM3 multiple family residential, and 1.63 plus or minus acres R-3 single family residential. The remaining 8.08 plus or minus acres will remain as I-1 light industrial.
I'll support. Councilmember Moser, thank you. Any further discussion? I have a motion in a second, City Clerk Deaton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote.
Hanson?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Kurtschwell?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Bogart?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes. Councilmember Kurtschwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the updated conditional rezoning preliminary site plan dated July 16, 2024, conditioned upon, number one, city council approval of the conditional rezoning and conditional rezoning agreement. Number two, city council's acceptance of the applicant's voluntary offered conditions as outlined in the conditional rezoning agreement. Number three, submittal of all required information for final site plan review. Number four, facade materials and samples being presented and approved during final site plan review. Number five, approval and recording of cross-access and shared-use agreements for access drives and utilities. Number six, rezoning is subject to review and approval of the conditional rezoning agreement by the city's engineer, planner, and attorney. And number seven, review and approval from the other applicable consultants, departments, and agencies, including but not limited to Eagle Approval of Site Plan.
I'll support.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kurtschwell, a second by Councilmember Dilg. Any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote on this one.
Dilg?
Yes.
Kurtschwell?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Bogart?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes. Thank you. Councilmember Kurtschwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the conditional rezoning agreement and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the conditional rezoning agreement.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Kurtschwell, a second by Councilmember Hanson, any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote on this one.
Bogart?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Kurtschwell?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. I look forward to coming in with updates and good news. Thanks again, have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Looking forward to those bright, shiny, silver shovels.
Moving on to new business number one, award sidewalk replacement project.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. I have two items tonight for you guys. The first one is the, to award the sidewalk replacement project to Luigi Fernando &amp; Son Cement Company. We started this project, or kind of doing this last year, but the sidewalk replacement project is being set up to replace any sidewalks that have been heaved, misaligned due to tree roots, tree root system from the city trees. Luigi Fernando &amp; Son Cement Company was awarded the contract last year, did an amazing job. The contract, the contract will be directed in which areas to address, the plan is to start in the subdivision and complete the area and move, move on to the next. The contractor will be removing, replacing 300 flags of misaligned sidewalks, they are creating trip hazards. They will also be removing and disposing of the tree roots causing the problems. The contractor is also performing the restoration. This job is budgeted for this year and will be coming out of GL 101-441-974. Materials are attached, or quotations from Luigi Fernando &amp; Son Concrete Construction Incorporated, Hartwell Cement Company. Possible course of action is award, not award, the sidewalk replacement project to Luigi Fernando &amp; Son Cement Company for $89,925 from GL account 101-441-974.
Councilmember Kibble.
Jeff, how much sidewalk do you suppose are out there that needs to be done?
So last year, there's, there's tons. Last year we did 300, we did all of Lyon Boulevard, Wellington, Winchester, that whole subdivision ate up 300. I know the subdivision we're going to is going to be Hidden Creek, Princeton Drive, the two Maple Creeks. I'm hoping that'll, the 300 will get all four of those done.
This year?
This year.
Okay.
I know Hidden Creek is, there's a lot in there, the trees have really, I don't know if the ground's super hard in that area, and the roots have really just stayed shallow in that subdivision. I, there's a lot that, I mean, you go in there, there, it's a mess.
In the event that, is there something beyond that then? I mean, whatever, if you're able to satisfy it this year, are you still looking at a reasonably large area that will need to be addressed next year, or do you think that'll kind of get us?
No, I'm going to, I'm going to, this is going to continue, I like, my, my goal is to hit those four areas. I know Oak Creek is a little rough, not, not as bad as Hidden Creek as far as, there's probably 100, 100 maybe in there. I actually have walked a couple subs recently in the road project to get those incorporated with the road project, and when you walk it, there's more than you actually realize. Like Brookfield had 60 flags that were, and the easements in there are humongous, so the trees are, for them to reach out and actually heave the sidewalks in there.
Right.
It's, it's quite impressive actually, what they do. But I would say, within a two to three-year span, we can be through town and the outskirts, like heading north and then a couple north, north sections of town, we should be pretty close to being able to kind of revamp around and hit bigger areas, you know what I mean? It's supposed to.
My, my only wonder was, are we looking at, you know, we've got two more seasons and the lion's share stuff of stuff will end up being satisfied, and then it's just picking up one ofs around afterward, you know?
I would say after this one, probably three seasons, we would be, because we, in the DPW, we can do, we've done in the past, we were doing it for years, we can do maximum of like 100 per year, and that's trying to get everything else done in, you know, in the meantime. So that's kind of why we started doing this, so we could mass, and just hit a subdivision and be done. Because you know, you go into a subdivision, you hit a couple of flags, the neighbors come out and say, hey, can you do mine? You start doing this number, it's kind of that call-out, you know, so.
Yeah, right.
We try to do as much as we can, but being able to go into a subdivision, actually start to finish the whole sub, it's way more efficient.
I'm just thinking also too, I mean, you know, it's 90,000 this year, so it'll probably end up being 15 at least more next year.
The good news is they actually held their price from last year.
Is that right?
They held, that's, that's why I want to go with them, they held their exact same per square foot, they held their price. I had, I had, I had one complaint out of 300 flags of concrete last year, and I actually had to look for the complaint. I went to the person's house and I, there was a tire track.
One of those.
It was a tire track that I think the grass was just pushed down, I mean, they did, I mean, they come in and knock it out in two, three weeks, restoration's done, didn't have to follow them around and babysit them, I mean, they have five different crews that come in and just knock it out.
I can see it being helpful for your guys, yeah.
Oh, it, you know, we're still doing some.
You can do what you're supposed to do, yeah.
We're kind of going into the subs that have like, hey, we have three or four that they've called in, actually, we have work orders on, we'll go and try and get those out, so I'm keeping them in a, in area so they're not bouncing and they can get done.
Right. Wow, okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
As a reminder of the council members, we need a motion in a second to bring it to the floor for discussion. Councilmember Hanson.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make that motion to award the sidewalk replacement project to Luigi Friedenaldi &amp; Son Cement Company for the cost of $89,925 from GL 101-441-974.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hanson, a second by Councilmember Kurtschwell. Now, do we have any further discussion? Councilmember Dill.
Just real quick, I just wanted to say that was my neighborhood, and they just did an unbelievably fabulous job. There were some really bad areas, and it's just all so nice, and they were really fast, and they just did a great job.
And they're, they're kind of innovative, too. There was one on the very end of Lyon Boulevard.
I know exactly what you mean.
The lady didn't want us to touch her tree, or touch the tree roots, which I get, because it's a big tree, it's an old tree. So, they, they came up with an idea, they said, hey, can we curve, you know, curve around the tree? And, you know, and I told the lady, I said, if it happens again, that one's gonna be on your dime, because we've now worked with your tree. And she was fine with it, of course.
It looks, that one looks great. That was a really difficult one to get by.
Yeah. Yeah, that was, almost the whole sidewalk was sticking up.
Councilmember Kurtschwell.
I do want to say that I did have an opportunity to speak with these individuals last year when they were doing it. They were the nicest people, they took the time. I, I know some residents in that subdivision who had their sidewalks repaired, and they went out, asked questions. This was a very professional crew. They, they real, I, I just want to make sure you know that. Very, very, very nice people. And they were hard workers. I mean, they were there for a mission, and they got it done. But they were professional, too.
I have a motion and a second. City Clerk Dayton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote on this one.
Kibble?
Yep.
Bogart?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Kurtschwell?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to new business number two, purchase of a two thousand and twenty-four model year Freightliner DPW salt and plow dump truck.
Okay. I want to apologize, there was a little mix-up in the paperwork that came with this. Somehow, two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four's budget numbers are in there. We actually budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand for it this year. It says one ninety-five in the back. I just want to make sure that's clear before I move forward. We did budget enough for this truck this time. Last year, we had to amend it a little bit. So, with that being said, the topic is to purchase a two thousand and twenty-four model year Freightliner for the DPW salt truck, classic chassis model one-zero SD plus. The DPW would like to replace the two thousand and six Sterling Dump Truck T-eight due to age and availability of parts for the cab. These trucks are used not only for plowing and salting the city's streets, but hauling leaf vacuums, dirt, leaf hauling, sweep, sweeping debris, haul to the dump, and many more uses. We use mitten bidding system in which the bidding is already completed through the Rochester Hills Cooperative. Wolverine Freightliner received the bid for the cabin chassis, and we are using the, the Myideal bidding system for the snowplow equipment that we add on to the truck. Materials attached as supporting documents are, the quote, the quote contains two, two parts. The cabin chassis, the bid from Wolverine Freightliner includes all the specifications that the city needs for an efficient plow truck that is used throughout the year for the, the projected price of one hundred and three thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars. The prices, and this is just another mistake, the price is not going to change on the cab chassis. That is actually the firm price, the price that is, may have a little bit of leeway, and there is the add-ons that we put to it, because he, there's a little bit of wiggle room in there. That's why I asked for the extra six thousand to make sure we're covered on the truck. We need to outfit the truck with snowplow equipment, lights, and box. This will be done through Howell Truck and Trailer Specialties Incorporated for the price of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. In fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five, the department budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the salt, salt plow truck in the budget, budget line item six-four-two-nine-seven-nine five hundred. The total projected cost of the vehicle is two thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars, not to exceed two hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars. Possible course of action would be to approve or not approve the purchase of the two thousand and twenty-four year Freightliner DPW salt plow truck chassis model one hundred SD plus from Wolverine Freightliner for the projected price of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars, with an additional six thousand not to exceed two hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars.
Councilmember Hanson.
So, Mr. Mayor, if we were to make a motion, should we make a motion to approve the amount not to exceed two hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars?
He provided the right information, so yeah, I would do that. Councilmember Hanson.
In that case, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of a two thousand and twenty-four model year Freightliner DPW salt slash plow truck chassis model one-zero-eight SD plus from Wolverine for the amount not to exceed two hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars.
A second.
So, we have a motion by Councilmember Hanson, a second by Councilmember Moser. Any further discussion? City Clerk Dayton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote on this.
Kurtschwell?
Yes.
Bogart?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business number three, purchase of a new F-two-fifty four-by-four crew cab pickup.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. The South Lyon Water and Wastewater Department is requesting the purchase of a new F-two-fifty four-by-four crew cab pickup. This will be in addition to our aging, in addition to our aging fleet. Observing the operational demands with a full crew now, it has become evident that an additional vehicle is necessary. This is a scheduled purchase for this year's budget, underlying item six-four-two-nine-seven-nine three-zero-zero. After reviewing the three quotes, we recommend the purchase of the F-two-fifty four-by-four crew cab pickup from Varsity Ford in Ann Arbor for the amount of fifty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars. We have attachment one, which is the quote from Varsity Ford Ann Arbor. Attachment two is the quote from Heinz Park, and attachment three is from Brighton Ford. Courses of action is approve or not approve the purchase of the new F-two-fifty four-by-four crew cab for the amount of fifty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-one from Varsity Ford Ann Arbor, underlying item six-four-two-nine-seven-nine three-zero-zero.
Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of a F-two-fifty four-by-four crew cab pickup from Varsity Ford Ann Arbor for fifty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars, underlying item six-four-two-dash-nine-seven-nine-dash-three-zero-zero.
I'll support.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hanson, a second by Councilmember Dill. Any further discussion? Councilmember Hanson.
Now, obviously, you got the, the three different bids. Do they have the vehicle on the lot? Is there any wait time?
So, this one is being built presently. We should have it in August. So, it's, it's a typical F-one-two-fifty. We see a lot of them out there. So, it will go to Dappa Hyde for the upfitting. That's the additional cost you see on that quote. That'll include all the lights, the back rack, the amber light on top, and the wiring.
No further discussion. City Clerk Dayton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote on this one.
Kibble?
Yep.
Hanson?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Kurtschwell?
Yes.
Bogart?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes. Thank you very much, Your Honor. Thank you.
Moving on to new business number four, which is recognition of the South Lyon Live gaming effort as a nonprofit. Is that correct, Councilmember Bogart?
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd like me, I can introduce it if you'd like.
You're gonna introduce it?
I can do that.
Okay, that's fine.
As part of the requirement for getting a local government body resolution for a charitable gaming license, South Lyon is Live has submitted the information for, during Pumpkinfest. They detached information, a copy of the current organization's bylaws and constitution, a copy letter to the IRS stating their organization exempt, and federal income tax number, and incorporation. Several other items is included, but tonight, in order to approve this, city council needs to adopt a resolution, pass a local government slate stating that the organization is a recognized nonprofit organization in the community, and that form is also enclosed.
Councilmember Bogart.
I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution to recognize South Lyon Live as a nonprofit organization that operates within the city of South Lyon.
I'll support.
We have a motion from Councilmember Bogart, a second from Councilmember Dill. Any further discussion? Councilmember Kurtschwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to let the individuals know that sit on the board of directors for this organization, how valuable they are to our community. Last year, they provided just tens of thousands of dollars that was donated to very, very worthy, worthy causes here in our city. Every penny of it, I'm sure, was well-spent by these organizations. And we are so lucky to have an organization like South Lyon Live in our community that has this kind of consciousness of what they can do to help improve the community. So, thank you to everybody at South Lyon Live. You are making a difference, and we need you. And thank you for the board of directors that have a sense of commitment to our community here in South Lyon and our charitable organizations.
Councilmember Bogart.
I'd also like to add that this year, South Lyon Live will be supporting Operation Injured Soldiers, which operates in the South Lyon area.
City Clerk Dayton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote on this one.
Moser?
Yes.
Bogart?
Yes.
Kurtschwell?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Kibble? Kennedy?
Yes. Thank you very much. Moving on to discussion of the budget this evening. Any questions for the finance director? Okay. And we'll open up for public comment. Anyone wishing to address the body, please step forward, state your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Chuck Plater. I'm the president of South Lyon Live. And so, I just wanted to say thank you for the, for the support there. We look forward to putting on a great event, and, you know, we had wanted to do some raffles last year with some of the vendor products, and we found out that we needed a license. So, we're going through that process this year, and we appreciate all your support. So, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. And we'll close public comment at this point, and we'll move on to the manager's report.
Just a couple items this evening. I want to update everybody regarding the paving projects. Eagle Point subdivision, they've already put down the base coat on half the road within that subdivision. They'll start the milling of the other side of the road, and then do the whole top coat for the whole subdivision immediately following that. They've already started some removal of pavement, of concrete sections within Brookfield subdivision, and that project continues to move forward. The two thousand and twenty-four concerts in the park have been very successful. Two Fridays ago, we did have the event where we had the food trucks. We had over three hundred people for the event, and it was a good success. We had a local South Lyon talent be the, the warm-up band for Phoenix Theory, and it was a good crowd, and everybody did enjoy the evening. And this last Friday night, we had another good crowd, close to three hundred people again for the event. So, those events are going very well. This year, we do not have the bad weather that we had in prior years, where we were constantly worried about canceling those. So, knock on some wood we have around here someplace. So, hopefully, that will continue. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Councilmember Dill.
Thank you. I just wondered if we had any update on the bike racks. It seems like we've talked about it forever.
I know Nate was working with Superb Fabricating for those particular items. I'm not sure if they've been completed yet or not. I know he was in touch with them, so.
Okay.
Councilmember Kurtschwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Boy, it was a rough week last week with Priority. I mean, my phone was blowing up all week. It was, the complaints came from individuals where garbage had not been picked up for several days, or maybe the basic waste was picked up, but not the lawn bags. Hours, they were waiting on the phone, trying to get through. One of Priority's employees actually told a resident, well, we weren't given all the maps at the time we bought. And I'm saying to myself, well, you know, I, I don't believe that excuse, because how can you buy a company that carries or goes out and collects garbage and not have maps of the city that you're going to be collecting the garbage in? You could go online, for Pete's sake, and get the maps if, if you needed them that bad. Apparently, on one pickup, where they came back and did a pickup, they were a little bit rude to the resident. So, could you provide an update on whether Priority is getting this under control? Because I understand that we're not the only city having problems with Priority.
There's a lot of municipalities that have problems. Some of the subdivisions that contract with GFL and now with Priority are not necessarily through the city. So, those aren't necessarily the large contracts that we have. The first week that we had, this was the first week of July, was, wasn't good. They came back several locations, several times, you know, to different neighborhoods, but they did pick it up. The second week was actually worse. So, that was not last week, but the, the week before. Mary in our office keeps track of all the calls that are received. Last week was actually better than, compared to the number of calls that we actually received compared to the prior week, and the, the pickup numbers were better. And this week has been very low. Of course, it's only Monday, Monday today, though. But we have been in constant contact with the other jurisdictions. We've been giving grades to Arsock Group to try to see how everybody else's is gauging, and most communities are having problems, but we see more equipment getting on the road each week. And we're happy that we're going to continue to approve of it. And we're going to continue to meet to try to ensure that all the residents' garbage, as well as yard waste, is, is going to be picked up in a timely manner.
Do you have a contact, I assume, is it Sam? Are you?
Yes.
Okay. And what is his justification for why things are the way they are?
Well, it's constant, constant changing, and they're adding all our routes, obviously, to Priority Way. So, the first week, they did not have enough trucks, not have enough people. They were picking up garbage all the way through Fourth of July, actually, on Fourth of July, all the way through that weekend, Saturday and Sunday. The next week, we did, had some, had some issues, but most of the subdivisions were getting picked up. They did have delays. And then we saw this past week, it was getting even better. So, as long as we consistently see, and they keep reporting to us, and that we do contact them if there is a problem, they are responsive to us. So, we continue to hopefully get better and better until we don't have those problems. We're grading it basically on an A to F scale. A, no problems, no calls. And how often we've ever had that with GFL, I don't really know. F is no garbage gets picked up and everybody has a problem. So, those, those are, those are the far reaches of it. And each week, we see now, like, as in last week, that actually did get better, and we're probably a B grade based upon all the garbage and the number of calls that we actually receive. So, we see, we see the improvement.
All right. Thank you.
So, all is the, the request still for the residents to notify City Hall if their garbage wasn't picked up on the scheduled day?
That's correct.
And any, anybody at City Hall can handle that call, right? They don't have to ask for Mary, or?
Yeah, anybody can handle that call. Mary's been documenting it and ensures that, you know, she contacts the right people, but she has all the numbers for all the cars, calls that have come in.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to city council comments for this evening. We'll start with Councilmember Kibble.
I don't have anything. Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Kurtschwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to say that I want to thank the incredible people at Vision Plus over in Brookdale Shopping Center. It's been a couple years since I've had my eyes tested, and obviously, I needed them, so I needed a little bit of a correction. So, all of you look absolutely great out there tonight. So, I want to thank Dr. Contri for his incredible insightness in terms of adjusting some of my prescriptions, and to Lisa Dubois, who picked out the frames. Just a great group over there. Shop local, please, everybody. We've got some great businesses in our town. So, once again, it's Vision Plus, Brookdale Shopping Center, Dr. Contri, and Lisa Dubois. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Moser.
I'm good. I don't have anything today.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Dill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to congratulate South Lyon Pride's Board on a great event. It was, it had beautiful weather, but a little hot. But there were, I think, it had to be more people than last time, a couple hundred people came. And just really appreciate the support of several staff who work in City Hall and a lot of council members that were there. It was a really nice event, and I just wanted to congratulate them for that. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember? Councilmember Bogart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few items. First, we just discussed South Lyon Live. They, they do need volunteers for the event. They, they do need volunteers for the event, please be sure to check out their site for opportunities. Christmas in July is coming up, it's going to be a great event, hope to see everyone there, I'll be serving libation. And then finally, South Line Area Youth Assistance operates a toiletry closet for families in need. They have a need for supplies, please be sure to stop by their Facebook page to, to see what opportunities there are to contribute. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember, councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my, my comments, I'll, I'll keep them brief today, but I do think that it bears mentioning, as we get closer and closer to the election in November, we really need to all look in and reduce the heat and the rhetoric, and take it down a notch. Earlier this month, there was an attempted assassination by a former president. And in this country, votes, not bullets, handle political debates. Political violence against any candidate is absolutely unacceptable. And my heart goes out to those that were impacted, the former president, the folks that were injured, and also the gentleman that was killed. It was a sad day for our country, and I do want to thank those in the law enforcement that did take swift action, though. So I hope that we can all look in and take it down a few notches, so that we can have a democratic election this November. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Just a couple of items this evening. Again, I want to remind everyone about Friday's concert in the park, that'll feature Topper Most, a Beatles tribute band that'll be performing at the Historic Village from seven o'clock until eight thirty. And then on Saturday, we'll have the All Day Motor Fest taking place from eleven until five. Magic Bus will be performing during the event, and their shows will run from noon until one thirty, and then again from two thirty until four. At which time, Christmas in July will kick off, with street party activities and entertainment provided by Sugar Tips until eight o'clock, at which time Fifty Amp Fuse will take the stage to perform until midnight. So going to be no shortage of things to do in South Line this weekend, so make plans to come out and enjoy it all. And rather than look for a motion to adjourn, I'll look for a motion to move to a closed session this evening. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to recess into a closed session for strategy and negotiation session, connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement in accordance with MCL fifteen point two sixty-eight one C.
I'll second.
Have a motion by councilmember Kurtzwell, a second by councilmember Hanson. Any discussion regarding that? City Clerk Deaton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote for that.
Hanson?
Yes.
Moser?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Dilk?
Yes.
Bogart?
Yes.
Kibble? Kennedy?
Yes.
So we will move into closed session, ask all those who are not involved in the discussion to leave the room, we will come back into open session at the end, and if there's any decisions made, we will put them on the record at that time.